I would like to open up the August thirteenth, twenty twenty four Auburn Main Planning Board Meeting. First item on the agenda is roll call and I will start to my left.
Bob Hayes.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Amanda Garrett.
Dave Trask.
Tim DeRoche.
Darren Finnegan.
All right, seeing as we have a full member Riley not present, I will elevate Amanda, who is an associate to a full member with voting privileges. Okay, next item on the agenda are the meeting minutes, so does anyone have an amendment to the meeting minutes? Seeing none, I would seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
All those in favor? Okay, excellent. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing special exception for Bear Holdings LLC. I will hand it over to staff for a readout.
So this project is comprised of five separate parcels with frontage on Center Street and Turner Street. One of the lots, which is the largest in area, is currently used for Bear self-storage. We've reviewed this project and it is an existing use and already meets most of the zoning requirements. The biggest component, which we discussed in the staff report, was stormwater. So, as you know, these types of developments create a lot of impervious area and pavement. So where it's less than ten acres, the city has the authority to review the stormwater in-house. And our engineering department has reviewed it, as well as our third-party peer reviewer, Warden and Curran. And they have determined that the project is pretty much all set with stormwater. I think they had one condition about some drain manhole structures. So you'll notice in your staff report that there is a condition on the last page to make sure that there aren't any improvements until the engineering department has signed off on it. The other item that is important for the planning board to note is that they are requesting a waiver on the traffic analysis requirement. So the ordinance allows this waiver to be granted by either the planning board or the engineering department. They've already had discussions with the engineering department and they are on board with that, so we're just at this point for checks and balances, just going to have the planning board grant the waiver with the approval of the engineering department, since it's already been requested in their application materials. We did ask for some additional screening of the storage containers that are there now, and they have additional ones that are going to be proposed in the rear of the site, and they are going to be screened by the building and some other vegetative buffers and landscaping. The last item that we put in your staff report to consider is a CMP easement. We recommended they consult an attorney for a legal opinion on whether or not the storage containers can be within that easement area. They reviewed the language themselves and said that it's fine. They don't see anything that would necessarily prohibit the storage containers from being in that easement. So I think it's okay for them to continue to move forward with it, but we did put it as a suggested condition to kind of cover, in case something were to happen where CMP were to say, hey, that's not something that we're allowed to have there. You know, it's more so on their end, but just to check that off. And so with that, the waiver request for the traffic analysis, the site plan special exception criteria that are listed in your staff report, and the conditions about the stormwater review and the CMP easement are kind of on your docket for tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but thanks.
Do you guys have any questions before we ask the applicant to come forward? Okay, at this time, if the applicant is here, you can come forward to the podium.
I'm Jan Wigman with Wright Pierce. We're the engineer for Bear LLC and Bear Holdings LLC on this particular project.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Do you guys have any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And no more questions for staff before we ask for public comment to come forward? Do you have questions for staff? Okay, all right. So at this moment, I would seek a motion to open up to public comment?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Hold on, my apologies. I need to pause real quick. Little housekeeping item, I need to elevate Bob to a full voting member. Bob, I hear good news is in order in that the city council has suggested you as a full member. I had that at top of my brain, but it's not gone to city council for full vote, so my apologies for that. So at this point in time, I'm elevating you to full membership, so my apologies, I put the cart before the horse on that one, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome. All right, so I will start over. So at this time, I would seek a motion to open up to public comment?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Excellent. So at this point in time, if you would like to come forward to have a comment about item number three on the agenda, the Bear Holdings, please come forward, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes. Okay, seeing none, I would seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent. Okay, so at this point in time, if you have any more questions for staff, please address and/or we can have a conversation amongst ourselves to talk about the project. Any questions you have around it?
So this is the, I guess, a question, this is partly where the storage is now, as well as K and R auto sales? Okay, so is that, the plan is to change their current building, looks like can move it down the street a little bit as part of that? Are they part of this whole process?
Yeah, that's how the site plan appears. That's what they're planning to do. They had to make room for some of that underground stormwater treatment that they're proposing, essentially proprietary devices. The big issue, you guys may have remembered during some of the higher rain events that we had, we had a lot of sheet flow coming across Route Four right there, and it was really a hazard. So we've worked with them, code enforcement's worked with them, Eric's worked with them for, you know, well over a year, maybe closer to two years, to basically clean this up, and this really does that, so. And then we're going to follow up an ordinance change. You know, we're supporting the business for ConX boxes, but we have our own challenges in the city, so we're going to try to clean that up as well. So it's kind of a full circle piece on this, and this is the first step.
So they won't be able to put the ConX boxes until it's, the ordinance is changed?
So the ConX boxes are there. They were, they have been notified, but they're, you know, this approval will give them the ability to put the ConX boxes there. In terms of putting them out through the community in Auburn, it technically should go through our process for the zone, for our, you know, language change under chapter six six six. But this allows the business to be there, allows it to operate and provide services to the surrounding communities, which they've been doing, so. We can say that throughout the city, there, you know, I'm not saying it comes from this business or not, but we have, the city uses ConX boxes. And we have our own issues. I mean, I worked on a project eighty-seven mil where, you know, security is an issue with tools and equipment, and we used a ConX box. It's just one of those things where we've got to go back, this has become a really clean tool. We've got to go back, clean the language up, identify that it's a useful tool in development, and allow the use, and do it in a way that, you know, protects the ISO from the roadway and protects the ISO from adjacent properties, so we're working on it, and we identify it as an issue.
I think with this plan, we'll be reducing the area where those can be stored, because it will be repurposed and a lot of it for auto sales, which is already happening on the site, and then proper screening on the residential side. And even the auto repair building up front will also provide some visual screen, ConX boxes out back. So they'll be able to buy, sell, and store them, you know, sell them to people to put on their individual lots. They're just not necessarily allowed on individual residential lots in Auburn, but they're around in other communities and certainly see them in Auburn. I don't know where they come from, but we'll talk about that with the ordinance.
What are the plans for the existing buildings on that lot?
My understanding is they'll continue to use that for sales, but I think we have the applicant here, if that's wrong. I think that the new building, I believe, is more for service repairs detailing, but the sales office, I think, stays.
Yeah, the new building is going to be for, will have a service component in the back, and then the front will be a sales component, actually. So the existing building, the existing sales office will go away eventually, once that new building is up and running.
Any other questions? Deliberation amongst the board?
I make a motion that the proposal meets the requirements of sections sixty dash one two seven seven, sixty dash one three three six, and sixty dash seven seven one. Accept the waiver request for a traffic impact analysis and to approve the site plan for a car display and service building with office and vehicle preparation slash maintenance areas and associated stormwater infrastructure and state delegated review for site location of development located at eight sixty-four, eight sixty-eight, eight seventy-eight, and nine hundred Center Street and eleven thirty-nine Turner Street. PIDs, do I have to read all those? Three oh one dash oh one seven dash oh oh two, three oh one dash zero one eight, three oh one dash oh one nine, three oh one dash oh one seven, and three oh oh dash oh oh nine in the general business zoning district with the following conditions. No development activity until any bonding or inspections fees is determined by the Auburn Engineering Department. All necessary stormwater improvements shall be shown on the plan to the satisfaction of the city engineer prior to the issuance of building permits. And the applicant shall provide confirmation from CMP that use of the easement area as shown on the plans is acceptable prior to the issuance of building permits.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second. Can we, he made a slight, he transposed the address, the Turner Street address, he said eleven thirty-nine, it's eleven ninety-three. Should we clarify that?
I did mean to say eleven ninety-three Turner Street.
Okay, so I don't think that we need a new motion. I think we're probably okay with that correction.
We'll take that as a clarification if you're okay with it as the motion.
All right.
That's all.
All right, so we have a motion that has been seconded in. Do I have any debate deliberation on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, excellent, motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing special exception for a site plan approval for an existing car service. So I will hand this over to staff.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Jason Cooper is applying for a site plan approval for, currently, right now, it's at one oh five Riverside Drive. It's an existing car service garage. The plan is to demo that structure and then go ahead and put three duplex units in there. There was a fair amount of questions about sewer and water and easements going through there. Staff working with the surveyor, and then the applicant, and then the Auburn Sewer and Water District found out that that wasn't the case, so really this site lends itself well to this development. There is, there is a, an issue here where the planning board will need to either approve the waiver, and specifically what the waiver is here is the, under the, this is under T four point two, not four point two B. And the difference between the two is that we allow sidewalks and accessways as the frontage requirements. So essentially that back lot, that back unit, the duplex there, does not meet the setback requirement, so under the Form-based Code, there is a waiver provision. We've given you very specific language, and I'll go over that to waive that. So what staff did to really meet the intent for connectivity and to address, you know, pedestrian movement and safety, is that we asked the applicant to design and install a walkway from that, from that back duplex to the front to get her back out to Riverside Drive. So again, this is, this project will fall under site plan review, special exception, and then Division fourteen under the Form-based Code. And again, we went through all the principal building placement under Form-based Code, the configuration, the building frontage types, the external elements, everything nails it, except for this unit in the back. You know, staff, you know, feels internally in our staff review, felt like this meant the intent of, you know, what we would call higher density in this particular area, it's supported through our current comprehensive plan and our current land use plan. So we're asking the planning board to make a motion for the waiver. I would want to see this, because it's very specific, two separate votes by the board make a motion to approve the waiver dated July twelve. Platts Associates wrote the criteria and established for Division Four, and then specifically established in section sixty-five five C one and objectives of section sixty dash one two two seven. So they've essentially addressed all of those in the staff recommendations one, two, three, and four. We've, I could go through that, but basically it identifies water drainage, buffers, lighting, sight and sound, safety for pedestrians. Again, number two is safety between vehicles and pedestrians, and again, that's the walkway, availability for dumpster enclosures and things like that. So obviously, that's required in this site, and then the protection of environmental features. They've got a real significant, for a small lot, they've got a very thorough sediment erosion control plan for this project, so, you know, we feel confident that this is, meets the intent, but again, I think, I think the board needs to decide if this waiver is something that they want to approve. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thanks, John. Question for you, where, so I was, I noticed the sidewalk request for the back, and in the plans that we have, are those not, is that not factored in quite yet? Because I'm, or am I missing where the sidewalk is to the back?
It should be on C one hundred, Plan C one hundred. So that, that plan does show a sidewalk. I'm looking at C one hundred, yeah, I think there's a sidewalk. So that does tie into the rear, it should be in your packet. My packet was, should be identical to yours, but C one hundred should show that detail.
John, with regards to the setbacks, I completely agree with your staff report, and that accommodating that issue in there is, because there's also another one in the T four two B development coming up later tonight. Is there something we're going to do in the future to make it so this isn't a special exception?
Yeah, so you mean a waiver, right? So this is a waiver.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry, yes.
Yeah, you know, I think that's something that we can address on that. If it's something that the board wants to initiate, staff could take your recommendation and move that forward for, ultimately, we'd go through the workshop and public hearing process and make a recommendation to council, but that's certainly something.
Of course, this is exactly what the zoning changes were intended to do. And it's completely residential around there, except for like right across the street.
Right.
There's a business, and that's it.
And they really are building out the frontage the way the ordinance called for. I think saying no to the waiver is really just preventing you from also using the additional acreage. It makes a lot of sense. They've done what the ordinance asked.
So it's kind of, makes it into a more of a road feel than a driveway feel.
Correct. So, and one other thing I do want to point out, as we get down into the weeds of this project, one and two family has a provision for just one parking spot. As, a lot of the multifamilies that we looked at requires, after we hit four units, requires that additional parking spot. In this particular case, that does not apply here, because it's a one or two family under the ordinance requirements. So I want to point that out, because we've looked at a lot of multifamilies, and we're always asking for that additional parking spot after we hit four, so if we had eight, we would need eight parking spots plus the two for visitors. If you counted the parking spots, there's, it's just one-on-one, so it does meet the requirement, does not require a waiver in that particular.
So is that a strategy for building three different buildings?
I think so. I think that lends well for, for, you know, single family and two families on the same lot. I think we're going to, as we, as we look at more of LD two thousand and three and then implement those ordinances, I think we're going to have very similar challenges on that, so.
Any more questions for staff before I call the applicant? If the applicant is present and they want to come forward?
Hi, my name is Travis Ninnam with Platts Associates Architects. Jason Cooper's right over here. If you've got any questions about the existing building or the history of the site, happy to be here today, and I'd like to explain the waiver request. I've been at this for twenty-eight years. I like to follow the rules, and I've never once asked for a waiver, so I'm doing it for you, Jason. And the reason why, and it wasn't after we tried a bunch of different layouts for this site, because again, you got to follow the rules, never once did it, and I wasn't planning on it. But it developed a much better site. We were able to get all the requirements met, except for the connectivity of this back lot. So really what we'd be looking at is providing more infill to connect that back building with the front building. The problem with that is you lose your individual entry for a couple of units at that building, and you lose a lot of open area. The site's losing about half of its impervious area with this development. And when I looked at solutions that brought the buildings together and met technically the requirement, we didn't get any units. We gained a sprinkler system that's extra cost and extra fees for the, that's passed on to the tenants, and we lost open space. And we lost the ability for a little area to try to retain some water that might be coming off these buildings. That's a situation that isn't happening now. The entire impervious area is running to the street. So this is a markedly improved scheme. It allowed us to add a couple ADA spaces, parking spaces, that weren't able to be achieved with the infill scheme. And then the dumpster location and that whole area is opened up for some open space, good dog walk area, you know, trash can be put away, it's all the way at the back of the site. I think this really is meeting the intentions of the district in that some of the parking is hidden behind buildings, like, you know, it doesn't want to be backing out in the street. It doesn't want to be in a tandem configuration, you know? It wants to be like this. It doesn't want to be one per unit, it wants to be two per unit. This allows a caretaker to come, we've got an ADA unit in the back there, it allows that to happen. Working families, you know, with dual incomes, you need two cars. So it's a flexibility that I'm happy to sort of work into this project, allows for different types of tenants, meet a wider, wider array of needs in the community. And also, it's converting what, you know, not to, you know, to sully any businesses on the street, but it's, you know, if you have a car service shop down the street, then that's great. We don't need another one, housing would be better. The scale of this also isn't the large multifamily scale that I think would be a little inappropriate in this neighborhood. It's a little more of a pedestrian scale. It'll be elevated a bit because of the site contours are somewhat elevated, meeting a lot of the district requirements are pretty easy on this side of the street, whereas the other side of the street has to hike all their buildings up two feet. So, so anyway, I think it's, that's why, it just made a better site, and we tried to achieve the connectivity with having the sidewalk system. Now, we have it running alongside the pavement area, so that might be where it kind of got lost, but we've got the provisions for the parking area and then the sidewalk area. And maybe one of the conditions, we could probably easily assume it would be to have that pedestrian area elevated slightly, you know, we could have a shallow curbing that lets you know that that's a pedestrian area versus the parking area. But we got the full depth parking spaces, the drive aisle for two-way movement, and yeah, the entrance as well was turned around on that back building to sort of face the street, so as you're walking along the street, you're going to see three distinct entries along the roadway there. So one more entrance on the street, which is usually that kind of articulation we're looking for, but then also the tenants have their own entrance, you know, they're sharing it with another group, but it's a little more identification, a little more identity, a little more personalization that kind of leads people to be more involved with their community, feel more pride in where they live, and be able to identify it, and hopefully keep the place up and looking good forever, so. Anyway, so I think that was, and I, I mean, I serve on a planning board as well, and I feel like these waiver requests, at least for me, I mean, my voice is shivering, it's like weird I'm doing it. You know, I don't, I think these ought to be one-offs, that you really ought to consider that location, that solve, that comprehensive plan for that area, and not open up a window that, you know, after a couple of problems, you try to close, but, because I don't take it lightly. I think it's, it's really important to just follow the rules, it allows the community surrounding this site to feel firm in the city's commitment to these rules and enforcing them and having them be the light bearer in the neighborhood, so I think that's really important, but I think this in so many more ways than the one, that it doesn't meet all the expectations of the district, so.
Well, I appreciate your creativity on this. This zoning district was allowed, is allowing you guys to be creative inherently infill something, everything else around it is built, you know, so it's going to create engineering problems.
It gives us flexibility a little bit, just this one time.
But it improves the character of the street at the same time, as things age and need to get replaced. Good.
I guess, any questions about any other components of it?
Quick question, just to make sure that I'm seeing, I like your raised idea. So if I'm looking at C one hundred, John, when you had that pulled up, just to clarify, it's, it's sort of the space just to the right of building A?
That's correct.
There's like a little, okay, I didn't see anything specifically calling out. Okay, perfect.
The, just, I guess to note, on C five hundred, there is a granite curb detail, and there is a raise, there is a six-inch reveal there for, and they're, they are going to use granite is what the design standard is, so there wouldn't, there wouldn't even be a provision in the, a waiver or a provision as a condition of the approval for accepting the plans as they are, so.
And each building is six hundred, it's a duplex at? And the, each building is 600, it's a duplex at 936 square feet?
Yeah, so there's some other things we're doing. We're, we're trying to find some efficiencies within the units. So these meet the requirements of having a single exit, so a lot less square footage is lost in stairwells. So the, the efficiency are also, the units are also open plan. Still have a lot of amenities like linen closets and pantries and stuff, eating kitchens. But the, the bedrooms are still, you know, 10 feet in both directions at a minimum. And, you know, try to find a very efficient layout, one plumbing stack that serves both units. The more dollars we can squeeze out of the walls, the more of these apartments we can get in this town. That's what we're trying to do. So yeah, the numbers are small. I do a lot of affordable housing, so they get smaller. But, but I think this, you know, with the, with everything that's going on on the site, I think it's the best sort of balance.
I don't want to hog the questions, but I do have one for staff when we're done.
Sure, no, go ahead. Is everyone all set with applicant? Okay, thank you. Did you have a question for staff, Dave?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm curious. So I noticed that the parking was, you know, one per unit in the zone. Do we designate that it needs to be one per unit? And so obviously the, the ADA, the two ADAs are great, you know, definitely needed. Obviously, if you don't need it, now we actually are down to four. So I'm just curious as to, we don't differentiate the type of parking spot that's needed. We just say one per unit. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. So we, we don't, we won't differentiate between ADA parking and regular parking in terms of the ordinance requirement.
I have a quick question for staff. On C 100, looking at the right hand where it shows the existing retaining wall and elevation lines, judging by those elevation lines, it's a pretty steep banking behind that existing wall. Is that accurate?
Is that in the back of the, back?
Yeah, along the rear property line where the existing trees are.
Yeah, that's an existing retaining wall.
Right. So my question is this, has anyone given by the elevation lines how steep it is? There's trees right there and I know trees help hold soil. But we're gonna have a building with occupants in it, close, very close to a very steep hillside. That just kind of has my gears turning a little bit as to the, the what ifs in life.
Yeah, and maybe the applicant could maybe add a little bit to this conversation, but I don't, you know, if we're talking about stormwater, they've all got it going into a low point. The treat stormwater, but the, the actual retaining wall, the existing retaining wall doesn't have, doesn't appear to have any type of fencing associated with it. But if maybe they could clear it, but that certainly could be a condition. I think that would be a good catch in terms of a condition on the back of that retaining wall, given. I don't know the, the difference in elevation. There's some elevation lines there, but it looks like, it looks like about a five foot drop if I was gonna, you know, from what the information that we have on the plan set, it looks like about a five foot drop. So having a fence there would be appropriate.
Yeah, that's where I was going. Thank you. Yes, I just noticed. I was like, wow, that's really steep. And potent, since we have, there's only an existing shed and existing garage and all of a sudden we're gonna have people sleeping right next to this really steep wall and retaining wall.
Applicant, did you want to come forward?
Thank you. On this subject, we are gonna be building these buildings right adjacent to that retaining wall. So maybe as a condition, we could offer a, a structural review that will likely be done by a geotechnical professional to assess the existing condition and recommend any adjustments that are necessary.
I, I, my personal opinion is I think that would be wise, but I don't know.
We need to know the toe of that, that anyway, to put our foundation in. So I, I don't think that's an unreasonable ask and, and we'd be happy to offer that as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we can, we, we could also, just so you know, we can address that through the construction permit as well. That, if that retaining wall requires a fence, given its height and the differentiation, we can, we can ask for that during, we work with code enforcement to ask for that. But certainly we want to add to make sure that we nail that during our building permit. We could, we could add the fencing as part of the, the condition.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I like that idea. I think I'd actually go one step further and I appreciate the, the offer just to do the, the engineering review of the actual current retaining wall. You want to make sure that it's there and it's sound and that you're not building in front of something that's not strong.
To your point on the parking, could leave it more open so that they can work with their tenant population. Because 33% being restricted to ADA is a pretty high percentage, especially when you get into a larger parking lot. We could work with them to make sure that they meet the ADA requirement minimums, that they make at least two available if there's needs.
Any other questions for staff before we open up to public comment? Okay, so at this point in time, I'd take a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent. So if you would like to come forward, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Jason Cooper. I got this project. The building's been in my family for, you know, we ran that business for 25 years. So I just wanted to come and let you guys know who we are. We're committed to this community. We want to make it better over there. It can make me sad to see the building go. But construction cost and it's just too much to build it back up. So I think just tearing it down, starting from scratch, beautifying the neighborhood, beautiful park right down the road is gonna be good for, you know, the elderly. It's gonna be good for a lot of people for that neighborhood. So just want you to see the face of the people that are building it and we're committed here too, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I'd seek a motion to close public comment.
No move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, perfect. All right, so at this point in time, we can open it up to staff for additional questions, comments. I know from my time on the board, I don't necessarily know how often or if we've seen kind of dual motions, right? You have two motions that you are suggesting for us. So if anyone has any questions for staff, so that we can reasonably and cleanly make some motions and feel free to, you know, have a conversation with staff about it because this is not something that we see very often. And, you know, we want to make sure that we, you know, get it right.
So if we're looking at the engineering review of the wall and any necessary adjustments to it based on that or height, AKA the, the fencing or anything else, do you, does staff have a preferred sentence or language that you would like us to incorporate as number three? In the, with the following conditions?
Yeah, we can just say address with.
Take your time. Thank you, Dave, for making that suggestion. I mean, started to kind of like do a little bit, but.
So, address existing retaining wall with geotechnical report and, and fencing to meet code requirements. So because of the elevation there, there would be a code requirement under the, under the IBC. So I think that would, that would meet the intent.
Okay, do you guys want him to repeat that a second time? Okay.
Slowly.
Yeah, address existing retaining wall with geotechnical report.
Okay.
And fencing to meet code requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
And just so I'm clear too, John, so we've got that one motion, right? And then we have the second motion. So that condition would be condition three on that second motion, right?
That is correct.
Okay, great, perfect. Okay, any more questions for staff? And if not, I would take a motion?
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the waiver dated July 12, 2024, written by Platts Associates pursuant to the criteria established in Division 14 of the Form Based Code District Development Standards, specifically established in Section 60-558 C1 and Objective Section 60-1277.
Okay, do you have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, do you have any discussion of the motion? Okay, okay.
Earlier, with respect to having this as an additional motion, and I guess I agree with it, particularly where it involves 4.2 or 4.2B. Because I think even with respect earlier, we started talking about, you know, setback and so forth. And I think there's a lot of specifics in 4.2, 4.2B that need to be reviewed. So by separating them out where we, you know, with a waiver, I think it begins to identify later to work with staff, those areas that we might need to change some language.
Okay. So any other discussion about the motion that Dave just made? Because we have a second. No other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Okay, great. Motion carries. Okay, so again, this is a kind of a dual motion project. So now we're actually talking basically about the project two at this point in time. And we have the second suggested motion in our packet. So anyone like to make a motion?
I might as well keep going.
Okay.
So I make a motion to approve the site plan, special exception for the proposed demolition of an existing car service garage and development of three duplex units at 105 Riverside Drive, City Assessor's Parcel ID 221-140. This proposal is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, Site Plan Review, Division 3, Special Exception, and Division 4, Subdivision in Article 4, Division 14, Form Based Code with the, with the city, with the Auburn Code of Ordinances with the following. Sorry, there was an extra word in there. All relevant building permits must be approved before the start of construction. Addressing application must be filed prior to building permits. And the addressing of the existing retaining wall with a geotechnical report and fencing to meet requirements.
Okay, do you have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, do you have any discussion of the motion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Excellent. Okay, motion carries. Okay, switching gears a little bit, next item on the agenda is public hearing map amendment. So we have seen this before, so I'm going to hand this over to staff.
So you, you have seen this before as late as last month. And the city council had initiated this change for the board to consider and then hold a public hearing on it. It applies to the same land area that this board and the council had considered a zone change in to go to general business last, I think it was December, late November, early December. And the council wishes to reconsider the zoning in that area. Now, coming up with this map wasn't done in a vacuum. It was discussed with the property owner that at the time wanted to do a housing development at this site. The comp plan does allow some latitude in how the board and the city council ultimately draw zoning boundaries. But the comp plan really lays out the general pattern of land use. I think what's been discussed at this site is a pattern that includes residential uses. The council had talked about that, the planning board and the developer or landowner at this point had talked about that. Staff's opinion is that the comp plan supported the change that was done last winter, but it also can support limiting some of the commercial uses if the consensus or public feedback is that there are concerns with the protection of the water quality of Lake Auburn. So this tries to address those. It reverts some of the land, the portions of the land that are closest to the lake that were changed to general business to multifamily suburban. That district shares the same exact density requirement. General business actually references that residential uses can be built to the density allowed by the multifamily suburban standard. So very similar, but it does limit some of the commercial uses that counselors were hearing from the public were still of concern while still allowing for, hopefully, you know, an encouragement to not have a gravel pit there forever. That we think that there could be better uses for that land adjacent to the mall area and could provide stormwater treatment that gets more treated before it goes into the ground. We've suggested a set of findings of fact. I have also suggested two motions, I think, and we'll, we'll talk more about this, I think, with the, with the remarks that we're working with the city attorney on. I think when it really becomes necessary to have the two separate motions is if the board doesn't agree. So you can, I think you can gauge that during, during a discussion. But if the board wants to amend the findings, then you wouldn't want to just say as written in the staff report. You'd want to suggest amendments and have, have a vote on those amendments before you made a decision. If the findings are, the board agrees with them, the board isn't necessarily finding fault with any of them or wanting to change them, then I think you could make the motion to adopt the findings and approve a positive recommendation in one motion if you wanted to. But it's really when, when there's differences of opinion that we have to dive into the details and vote.
Okay, so just so I'm understanding you, and again, now we're just talking about the motions that you put forth in front of us, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we have suggested findings to base those on.
Okay, so you said the first suggested motion, right? So it'd be in that number one? And then you say use that and then go through the suggested findings of fact and vote on each one?
No, what I'm saying is if you read those and those are, those meet your expectations, then you could say and vote to adopt the findings as written in the staff report and not go word for word. But if you want to change them, then we really have to make sure we capture what you want them to say to support your either approval or denial, in this case, a recommendation in favor of or not in favor of.
Okay. Well, I, so just, I mean, motion aside, I think everyone knows, I know, I do. You know, we've been at this for a really, really long time. And I think the heart of this whole conversation was around getting this land to a better place, right? So where it's at current day is not ideal. Its trajectory is not necessarily ideal. And by having some intervention and with, you know, staff and development, getting, really truly protecting Lake Auburn by developing, developing it sustainably and smartly so that we're no longer like blasting into the water tables, right? So I think that is the intent and the purpose. So if this gets us there, then this gets us there, right?
Yeah, and that, that's one of the findings, that it does help promote that, that trajectory someday. If the property owner decides to move away from gravel mining toward, the current operation can blast into the water table and does.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess if I could add one piece to that is that, you know, we've said this many times, but you know, if a development does come before the board, then that's when we really get the ability to, to look at the protections for the lake. You know, we had described earlier how we, the convincing You know, we had described earlier how the convincing story was, you know, as we changed it to GB, we were like, well, we could imply low impact development techniques here. We could do buffers. We could implement some of these design standards that really protects the lake, protects the groundwater. And, you know, those elevations are
Absolutely.
assumed and and things like that. So it, this isn't, this isn't the end all. And this wouldn't be the end all for the for the planning board as well. So if there's development that's going to happen in the future, we'd certainly come back here.
Any other questions for staff, thoughts, suggestions? Dave, do you have something?
Well, John, I appreciate what you just said. And all holds true if we don't make the change. But I understand that this is consistently coming back and forth in front of us. And I guess at this point, you know, in order to hopefully allow for future changes to occur, I'm, I'm okay with with the carve out. It's just unfortunate for me that staff has had to deal with so much invested in this when in theory we still had the ability to make those protections without making the zone change again. So I just feel like we've spent a lot of time on this when I just don't, I think there were other bigger issues when we, at the end of the day, are still going to be able to put in the protections that we need to without the change.
And I guess to go with that, it's the supported opportunity, right? So we're just trying to support an opportunity here to make change. And that's, at the end of the day, that's what it's about. And that's what we supported from day one, so.
I completely agree with Dave and Stacy and also with your efforts to help make this happen. Get something done.
All right, any other topics? Okay, seeing none, because this is a public hearing. I would seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second? All right, all those in favor? Excellent, if you would like to come forward and discuss item number five on the agenda, the map amendment, please come forward, state your name, your address. As it, and you have five minutes.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. You've seen me here many times before. I've been involved in the zoning
Is that Johnson Road in Pownell or in Auburn?
Auburn. And I've been here many times before in regard to zoning matters in and around the watershed and along Grace Lawn Road for the last couple of years. Our group was in favor of the change of the zoning boundary last December, which moved the watershed boundary to this configuration where it is at present. But we were opposed to the flat out general business zone extending all the way to that boundary right up to the width of a piece of paper from the watershed. We felt that was too intense and we think this proposal is far, far better. At the workshop last month, Mr. Hayes read to you some of the 32 different categories of permitted uses, not special exceptions, not site locations, not variances, but permitted uses in the general business zone, which include among others hotels and motels, funeral homes and mortuaries, warehouses, wholesale offices, restaurants, halls, private bars and lodges, bowling alleys, animal hospitals, car washes, adult and use and medical marijuana growing facilities. That's just too much, too intense type of uses right up to the watershed boundary. The proposed residential zone in this area that has been proposed is a much better way to graduate the intensity of the use toward the watershed. And it would have infrastructure along with it in order to accommodate waste, et cetera, that would be generated in any such development. The other key fact to keep in mind is that there is no development proposal for the area at present. There had been previously, that's withdrawn. And that presents the board with the absolute best way to do a planning activity, prospectively and not reactively when there is some big project thrust before you and there's a lot of pressure to make decisions one way or another based on the particular project. This is being viewed from the perspective of best land use for this area going forward. And I urge you to adopt this with a positive recommendation to the council. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to come forward?
Good evening, my name is John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'm here to support the recommendation of the planning staff and the proposal that's before you here. As been noted, this is consistent with the existing comprehensive plan proposing more dense development in area. This multifamily district has the same density as the business district did. But it does not have some of those ancillary kinds of business development that may not be in the best interest of the community to have them there. I'll also note that the current owner of the property proposed residential development where the multifamily suburban is indicated here. In fact, his land use consultant has proposed this map. That's his map, where it came from. So it's consistent with what least originally was their plan for development within that area. And it also provides over 15 acres of property along Mount Auburn Avenue for development of business. That's consistent with what the zoning is across the street from it. So I believe this is a good development pattern going forward here. Benefits the community, provides opportunity for much needed housing, some additional business development, and provides additional area that ensures that the lake will be well protected. I might also note, and you may keep, want to make a note of this, that this proposal could also be joined with what's known as a planned unit development, a PUG. Under that, it provides far more opportunity for the planning board involved in that development to do the kinds of things you spoke about a few minutes ago, which is making appropriate protections with that area. And it also provides for bonus development, so you could actually increase development there because it allows them to have denser development, but maintain some open space beyond what's currently required. That might be a good way to go at some point if someone wishes to develop this more intensely with this. So I would urge you to adopt it.
Okay, anyone else like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I would seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor? Okay. All right, yeah, so I mean, at this point in time, you know, we have two motions before us. We've got the motion to adopt or adopt with any amendments or make a favorable recommendation to city council. You know, I'll just share my personal opinion. I think, again, we all worked really hard at this. We worked with the prior city council and obviously, you know, staff and and the public to get to where we were at. At this point in time, you know, there was a pivot. And now we have a new recommendation in front of us. So the new recommendation did come from city council, right? So at this point in time, I feel most comfortable addressing the recommendation that came from city council. They asked us to, you know, either have a favorable or not favorable with questions, considerations, which we did do. We're still, it's still in front of us. So at this point in time, I would feel comfortable with a favorable recommendation because they brought it to us and we're just providing them a recommendation back. And that's, and what we did with the prior city council, we did basically the same thing too as well. So I just, that's my personal opinion, but I'll open it up to, open to other thoughts. Are questions for staff? Or a motion?
We're ready to make a motion?
Sure, unless anyone has any questions?
I make a motion to adopt the above findings of fact and forward a favorable recommendation to the city council to amend the official zoning map of the city of Auburn entitled City of Auburn Zoning Map dated May 16, 2016, revised through its current date and revisions as provided under Section 60-5 of the zoning ordinance by amending City Assessor's Parcel IDs 289-001, 289-002, and 277-026 from general business zoning to the multifamily suburban zoning district and retain 15 acres within City Assessor's Parcel ID 289-001 in the general business zoning district.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have any discussion of this motion?
Should this have been two different motions or is it fine to do it in one?
So, yeah, I think, and we talked a little bit about that. I think we'll talk about that more at an upcoming meeting. But I think unless, if there is agreement that these findings are appropriate and you don't want to make changes to them, then I think referencing them allows you to adopt them and approve it.
So hold on. If we're making a favorable recommendation, you're also saying that we have to address the finding of facts within the favorable recommendation?
The way that it was done, I think, works. And I think it sounds like there may be agreement among the board that these findings are appropriate to support a decision to recommend approval of the amendment.
So I'm, maybe I'm misreading this?
You can do that in one motion if you want to because you've referenced the facts, findings of facts as drafted in support of your motion.
So correct me if I'm wrong, is one motion to adopt and one motion is to send a favorable recommendation?
You can do them both together as long as they both get done. I think what we're trying to do is if you have fault, find fault with what's recommended, then you have the ability to rework them before you make each motion.
I, I did that as an attempt to show evidence as to the decision, that's why.
Okay.
And you've successfully, I think, captured the findings and then recommended approval of the motion by doing it that way. The findings are part of the record now because they were referenced in the motion.
Okay, okay.
So we, like, we didn't really have discussion? But that makes it sound like we're all in agreement?
You can have discussion now that there's a motion.
I know we can now, but like before, there was not really any more questions after people spoke and
Then there was no fault pointed out with them. So it's a good indicator, but you can still discuss them now and propose amendments if you want to.
I, I do have a quick clarifying question. With regard to the, the acreage that is going to be retained in general business, do we actually have, because it says that it's a section within it, do we actually have firm guidance and guidelines as to specifically where that transition will occur?
Yeah, though this map is to scale, we have it as a CAD file. The acreage comes out to 15.7 remaining in the general business and then 44.9 being proposed to go to the multifamily suburban. And we can, we can scale off that map.
You can, okay.
Yeah, I would, I would use those numbers and I would also include the date of this map. Should be a date on the bottom.
So you're asking for Mr. DeRoche, for his first motion, to also address the date of the map?
I think it's more official, but then this map has been done by GIS folks and is
Would you like an amendment to the motion?
I think that would be appropriate. And then that way that we can carry this map forward through council. And so there won't be any more questions about it.
So would someone like to, do you want a new motion? Do you want to vote this down? Do you want an amendment to the motion?
Is the intent to recommend approval of the map that was included in the planning board's packet that you have in front of you was on the website and is shown on the screen dated August 20, August 7?
I'm sorry, you kind of faded out there at the end?
Dated August 7, 2024. I think it's been in your packet unless you're making a motion to change what's been given to you and the public. Then you can reference the date and that just makes it absolutely clear that this map that everybody has today is the one you recommended.
Yeah, that way there, we don't have, you don't have to call out this
Okay, why don't we do an amendment to the motion? Like, why just do amendment to the motion?
You can, yep. If you wanted to make an amendment to specifically reference the map that was included in the planning board packet, changing 15.7, retaining 15.7 acres of general business and changing 44.9 and dated August 7, 2024.
Got it, Tim?
Would anyone like to make an amendment to the motion?
I make a motion to amend my first motion to clarify the last sentence, multifamily suburban zoning, zoning district and retain 15.7 acres within City Assessor's Parcel ID-289-001 in the general business zoning district from map dated August 7, 2024 of said parcel.
Okay, so do I have a second?
Seconded.
It's an amendment to the motion, okay. Do you have a second? Second, okay. Any discussion of the amendment to the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay, so the amendment to the motion carries. Now we still have the first amendment, or the first motion, sorry, on the table. So we have an amendment, done with that. Now we have the first motion that was seconded. Any discussion about the first motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, motion carries. Staff, do you need anything else from us on this item? Okay, perfect. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing special exception for Broad Street Farms.
Broad Street Farms is applying for a site plan approval for an existing lot to be developed into 12 duplex units. And it's along Broad Street, also known as Accessor Parcel IDs 171-004. The, the 12 duplex units are on 33.97 acres. There was some constraints on this lot. There was significant amount of wetlands. And in the scientific world, we refer them to as WAS, Wetlands of Special Significance. So avoidance was paramount on this. So if you impacted, and that's what really drove a lot of the conformity of the law and how things are laid out. But if you impact up to just 500 square feet, you got to get kicked in, you would get kicked into a full Natural Resource Protection Act permit. But they did a, they did a great job of avoiding those wetlands. And they have a just total disturbed area of 3.26 acres. And the impervious area is just over an acre. So it does take delegated review from the city. The stormwater treatment's a little interesting here. We talked a little bit about this under the single family residential in the Lake Auburn watershed where we, we treat a lot of phosphorus with, with buffers. This particular project treats all the stormwater with buffers. So we're capturing land, we capture that land in a buffer and described in an easement that's recorded in the registry. So that'll be a condition of the approval of this project. There's five, five driveways that will serve as many as six units from each curb cut. The spacing based on the miles per hour, we worked with engineering on this. So we made sure that they met the access management standards for spacing based on the existing speeds that are out there. And then after we look at the traffic impact analysis standards in the Section 46-234 and we separate those by each of those five entrances, it's really a miniscule amount for traffic impact analysis. So the applicant asked for a waiver. It's like maybe three trips on the peak hour from each of those locations. And the city engineer granted, granted a waiver for this project. They, you know, from staff perspective, a waiver for this project. They, you know, from staff perspective and from holistic approach from the city, and Eric could probably speak more detail to this, we are requesting the applicant to include on the opposite side of Broad Street, a design for a sidewalk and an easement for future sewer and water. There has been an $8 million earmark. Because of the density in this area, we're really looking, if you looked at a map, we can start to draw lines where we really want public water and sewer. There may be an opportunity for public water and sewer at this location. The applicant, in this particular case, is applying through the, with wells and, and has provided the information for subsurface wastewater, meeting, you know, chapter 41 requirements and the soil tests and everything. All those were included in the packet. The, we talked a little bit about this, the principal configuration of the lot, where 2, 4.2T-4.2B has a little bit more flexibility. We think about those back lots and its relationship to the front of the road, they don't necessarily meet the requirements, but if we take the adjacent lots, then we're, they've got significant setback requirements. A lot of these houses are upwards to 150 feet back, so those additional units in the back met that requirement by taking each of the adjacent lots and using an average of the two to get that setback requirement. So, that was, that was language that was added by the planning board as we walked through those zoning changes to make that more flexible and more conforming to the, to the neighborhood. So, that's just an interesting point. We never, we never used that before, that provision, but in this particular case, didn't require a waiver. So, we're not, we're not asking for any waivers on building placement or any of the configuration, frontages, anything like that. Again, you know, all appropriate permits are received from start of the project. That means engineering would, would have to sign off on the stormwater, bonding and inspection, again, the full sidewalk design. We're asking that for a condition of the first certificate of occupancy, CFO's certificate of occupancy. So, before that first unit can go online and people can move in there, we want to, we want to see a design approved by city engineering that's ready to go. So, we're shovel ready if we get that $8 million. And then obviously recording those buffers, I talked about that a little bit more, and that's a requirement of the stormwater application. So, we give them some time to get that stuff done and, and they could get started on maybe some of the two back lots. And in the meantime, they push this project through in terms of money. We, the front lots get provided public water and sewer. So, I think it's exciting. The landowners were very specific that they wanted to match. The density could be higher there. You know, you could go to three and a half stories. They were very specific with the developer that they really wanted to match the neighborhood. So, duplex units were the highest density that they could have in this particular case. I'm hoping for any questions. Board has any?
I thought I noticed you had mentioned water and sewer, but yet I also noticed that we've got the septic systems and there was reference to wells. So, I'm assuming that the water sewers is a future, whereas existing building, if this goes forward, would be septic and well?
Yes, that's correct. But it, you know, we, I'm hoping the developer's here, but I think the intent would be to potentially move on a couple of the buildings if they wanted to, but then in, in the future, if we got the sewer and water project and that's coming forward, we did a calculation, it's a savings of over $300,000 for the developer. I'm sure that they would, you know, consider waiting, but I would want to have them verify that. I don't, I don't want to speak for the developer, but that was mentioned in conversations.
Do the map, do the map show where the well locations are currently or just that would be determined afterwards? I didn't see any W's, but maybe I just missed them.
There was, there was additional information that was provided. Maybe the applicant could, could show us those locations. I, I know the septic systems were identified.
And it did, it did show the separation. We can find that, that document for the wells, but we have spoken with the applicant about the possibility of public water and sewer, and we'll know, we have a significant transportation land use study going right now on Washington Street that includes this area as an infill area in support of the comp plan. We should know this fall to winter if the water and sewer project is likely to happen over the next one to two years. And I think that they would potentially hold off on most of the units, if not all of them, to see if that is headed in the right direction. And then if it is, then it could line up well with construction of the units, not building individual septic system.
So, if that's the case, would we grant an extension now?
You, you could certainly, yeah. Instead of the one year, do the two now and not have them come back if, if that project is what's holding them up. Otherwise, they'd have to come back in a year if they hadn't started with any of the.
That's forward thinking. I mean, you could add that as a condition of the approval.
With a few units sharing a, a system both well and sewer, what are the long-term maintenance agreements that are necessary to make sure that if there's a shared system, there's a shared responsibility financially?
Yeah, there, there would be, there would have to be some type of information on that, but they could, I don't know for sure, but they could do individual septic system for each unit and have a tank for each additional one. They've identified large areas that's suitable for septic system. So, they, they could go in either direction. That was something that I, I didn't think about in terms of having any type of, you know, draft language for, you know, a declaration for use or anything like that for the septic system or the well.
This is not being developed like for, as a condo area?
No, the, the plan was to, was to hold is what we heard from, from the developer, but that, I guess that could change. But right now, the plan was to hold those, those units.
So, those would be rented, which means that the developer would be responsible for any, any certain maintenance or any issues that arise by that, right?
That's correct.
And if such time that they decide to flip it to a condo or sell it off or something like that, those things could probably be addressed during that point in time, I'd imagine.
And any financial institution is going to require those to be hammered out in writing before.
Yep, that's what I thought.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, they are either going to be rented primarily or rented initially?
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I will see if the applicant is here to come forward.
Hi, my name is Craig Sutcliffe, Terrady Consultants, representing Andrew Hargerty, the applicant. To clarify, yeah, his plan is to build the first two units, well, the first two duplexes, one through four, off of Withem Road first. They have a smaller septic designed, and then they would have their own well up towards the road. And then in the future, depending on how things come out for public water and sewer, if that's coming, it would be a little wait for the other ones, but if it's not, then they'll just be developed to show on the plan with septics and wells. The wells are going to be located up closer to, not near the, closer to the road to keep the setbacks from the septics, but they're going to be one well per kind of pod of, of units. And then, yeah, he's going to be owning all of the units and renting them. That is the intent.
I think this is the icon for the well, and I'm seeing it now at the front of each building.
It should be, it should be right there, yeah.
And then up front.
It should be up a little bit farther, but I don't know, that's not the well location, but I'm not sure. That looks like a PDF thing, but they should be up, up to that general area is where they are. They'll be sep, they should be up to that general area. They'll be separated with adequate setbacks from the septic systems.
Now, when you say per pod, is that like per two unit or, or per like driveway cut?
Per kind of driveway cut is the intent for the well per kind of driveway cut.
Okay, so we've got like the, the one that has three, six, three buildings, six units that would have be serviced by one well?
Yes, yep, that's the intent.
So, just to kind of add to that, Dave, on your comment, we did take a look at that under chapter 241 in terms of gallons per day. They are under the threshold, they're still under the 2,000 gallons per day. We did the math on that, so they don't, there's not any additional requirements. This is just like a standard septic system that you would put in for your home, very similar to what we've talked about in the Lake Auburn watershed, other than the requirements of the additional 24 inches to the limiting factor. But other than that, the, the construction, the design, everything's the same. It still goes through code enforcement through the HHG 200 form, and that whole application process is still the same and nothing changes, so.
I was thinking the same thing.
Thank you for clarifying that, yeah.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I guess I, maybe John indicated the sidewalk provision would be on the opposite side of the street?
That's correct. Given the, and, and just to add a little bit to that conversation, Bob, is that the, those wetlands that we talked about is really that limiting factor. To put them on that side would really be very expensive for the city in terms of really stretching out that in the future for that $8 million. We want to avoid that. So, we went to the developer and then they went to the landowner across the street. We've got it in writing, it's in the packet. They've identified as being able to provide an easement for the sidewalk and any additional fill extensions or sewer and water that we want to lay in that area, that'll be allowed in there as well. Not only will that agreement be with the city specifically, but also with the Auburn Sewer and Water District.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we open it up to public comment? All right, at this moment, I would seek a motion to open up for public comment?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, excellent. So, if you would like to come forward, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes at the podium.
Yes, hello, my name is Michael Lemay. Live on Sherwood Drive. I'm not opposed to this project. However, I have to apologize. Where is Withem Road on that map? That's Withem over there?
Yep.
Okay, so these are all going to front on Broad Street except for the two, three in the back? Okay, so that's, that's Withem, that's Broad. I would just like to remind you that over the years, there have been a couple of fatal accidents right on that hill. The hill is a major problem, and they may want to consider having traffic exit onto Withem Road and then come onto Broad Street if there's not going to be a whole lot of traffic. But it is dangerous in this section because of the hill. The second thing is, what is the setback that you've arrived at?
The setbacks, I believe it was 150 feet.
Isn't that a 25-foot setback zone?
The, there is a provision under Form Base Code T 4.2B that takes the averages of the two adjacent lots and uses those as an average. So, we, we use those as the, the basis for the setbacks of those ones in the back.
So, that would be, the farm would be one of the adjacent lots?
That's correct.
What's the other one, the business?
Just for the interest of time, real quick, why don't you ask us your questions and then we'll address your questions with staff? I'm sorry.
Okay, so, the two properties that are used for the setback, one of them is the farm, I take it, and the other one is the business down the road, the steel company?
Okay, I'm, we'll, we'll take your questions and then we'll address them with staff. So, your, one of your questions?
Okay.
Okay, we got that, yep.
Okay. Well, if you address it with him and he tells me, I have a comment about it.
This is public comment, you have five minutes and three minutes.
All right. So, anyway, I would just like to mention that the, what is it, T 2B, T 42B, yeah, the zoning out there is inappropriate because of the speeds of cars out there, and it's the same as down the road, down by the junkyard and a little further down and everything. You took a, the council took a city zoning and put it out into the country. Now, you mentioned the speed limit is 45. I can assure you that nobody goes 45 out there. If you did a traffic survey, you would find that it could be anywhere between 55 and 70 or even more. And to have that type of zoning with setbacks so close to the road is inappropriate for the area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, anyone else like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I'd seek a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, public comment's closed. All right, so his question was, when you had mentioned the setbacks and the, was one a farm and one is a business? Do we know?
Sorry, say that again?
I think his question was, when you, we looked at the aggregate of the setbacks, he wanted to know what the two, the two were, right? One was a farm and one was a business? He just wanted to confirm what setbacks were used.
Yeah, there were the, the two adjacent buildings there. I, I mentioned 150 feet, it was actually 168. I went back, referenced the, the staff report and used those two averages as 168.
Okay, okay. All right, any other questions for staff?
Yes, just to review, how did we come up with that provision with respect to setback? Or anybody considered it? Was that to deal with 4.2B as being an issue again with setback?
Yeah, this was a provision that was put into the, into our ordinance to, to deal with existing structures in a neighborhood to kind of be able to marry or, or make it similar to the adjacent, the adjacent land around it or adjacent development around it, rather.
So, it's a way to, to deal with 4.2B in some areas where it doesn't really apply?
Yeah, I think so. The, the five to 25 feet was very limiting. In some instances, they wanted to increase those if, if the surrounding house lots were further back. They wanted to allow that flexibility.
And I guess I, it is difficult, even with the four pods that are immediately against Broad Street. It does raise a question. This is a roadway which is not predominantly residential, certainly not residential properties close together. We do have an issue with setbacks because even for plowing, yes, our winters are becoming milder, maybe we're not pushing as much snow, but along an area like that, the setback for those first structures is not enough. I guess the other concern I have would almost seem that some sort of fencing, particularly if these are going to be rental units, maybe they're only two-bedroom, so probably not a big family, but a child. but a child back close to the road, uh, is a concern. There should be maybe some fencing. But I think, uh, Form Based Code doesn't allow some of, uh, even, uh, vinyl fencing in that area. You almost think that posts and rail would be more attuned to that rural setting.
So, um, in this particular case, we're, the former zoning rec- uh, was at 25 feet. These, these structures are all, you know, even if we're looking at former zoning, but really, if we think about the, the, um, our, um, future land use plan and how we drove the additional densities in this area for zoning change, right? So we want to, we want to add the additional, um, density in this area to support the growth of the city and it's supported in a, in a logical pattern. Um, this supports that. But in, in regards to the setbacks of the structures, they're, they're all being shown at 20, 20 feet from the right of way. So there's, there's more than ample space between the structure and the right of way. And most of them are at 25 feet. So I think that that, um, that, that's really conformity to the existing housing that's there and the former zoning that was there. It's, it's really, um, it allows the, the density to grow, which I think is the intent. But in this particular case, I think it's the softest way to do it when we don't have, you know, the supporting infrastructure in place, the sidewalks, the sewer, um, things like that. But this is a way to do it. Um, they could have gotten a lot more density here in terms of what the zoning will allow. Um, if, if we think about baby steps of introduct- introducing, uh, development throughout the city and how this zone has changed, I think this is, um, a good step forward. Um, I think the current landowners put a lot of thought into that. They were very, um, careful with, you know, when they sold the, the development or if they have a proposal to sell this pending this approval. But I think they, they put a lot of thought into that and thinking about the community and, and how it affects the end user.
I already raised those questions because I do think this project does fill a void. It, it is addressing affordable housing, actually, because it, uh, it's not elaborate. It's a price point. Uh, it is close to the turnpike, so, uh, it's needed. But I think it, it does show again that we do need to go back and work with Form Based Planning a little bit further, uh, because again, 4.2B truly doesn't fit this area properly.
I, I need you to say more about that. I'm not sure what you're getting at beyond you don't like it there.
Well, I think, you know, is, already has to be done setback. I mentioned fencing. You know, some, there's some detail in Form Based Codes, uh, even an earlier project that we discussed. There is some vinyl fencing that's being used in that project. Form Based Planning supposedly doesn't allow that. So I just, it's another example that I think that the 4.2B was, uh, spread over a large area. In some areas, I don't feel that it is appropriate. And I think that, uh, you know, I think it has been used, this is much better than have a three-story building out in that area. So again, I, I like this project, but I'm only times suggesting, as Paul, you did earlier, that we do have some issues with 4.2B as written and as applied.
I just want to say, Eric, that I appreciate what you said earlier and I do think this is a very gentle way of, um, bringing in housing into this area that is needed. Um, like you said, it could be a lot more dense than what it is and I just appreciate, um, all the thought that went into it, especially with this kind of neighborhood. So, thanks.
Do we know whether or not, um, it, you mentioned affordable, um, but do we know if these are actually market rate or what the intent would be of these units?
And is it applicable to an approval of a project?
It's, it's not, it's not, uh, any of the criteria that we need to review against.
Okay. They're not looking for a higher density and there's been no mention of them being anything.
Okay. Um, am I, based on the look of these, it looks like they had a one-car garage with, uh, with the house adjacent to it and that the car, the garage is shared. I mean, it's, uh, the separator between the two units?
Yes, each one will have its own one-car garage and we made space for parking in front of that garage as well for a full, for a car space.
Okay, yeah, I was going to ask about like guest parking because obviously with the speed of the street, you know, wanting to make sure that there's enough parking for
Yeah.
cars, guests, residents, that type of thing.
At the end of, um, each of those kind of shared drives, that is long enough for parking of a guest as well. And it's sized where you could fit two cars side by side, so there's kind of some quote-unquote overflow parking there. And it also helps with, you know, if there's no one there, they can back out of the driveway safely and get out to the main road.
Okay, so John, what I think I heard you saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard you say prior to the zone change, the setback was 25 feet, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so people that bought a house had a 25-foot setback, right?
That's correct.
And they were not required to put fences?
No, and, and, uh, just to be, you know, if we're, if we're going to follow the, you know, the ordinance to a T, it's, it's suggested language. Um, and those are in 4.2 and 4.2B, it's suggested. It's not required, whereas in some of the, uh, more densely Form Based Code, there is required fencing.
Okay.
So in this particular case, it's not required.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just clarify that the edge of the right of way is very different than the edge of the paved roadway and we did have Public Works Engineering look at it. And it looks like there's about 18 or 20 feet from edge of pavement to right of way and then 24 or 5 feet from there to the house. So we're, you know, 36 to 38 feet probably from the edge of the road and Public Works was comfortable with that.
Eric, I was, you just touched on what I was going to ask. Uh, unit 19 that I see in this map, which is the one that would be on the top right, which looks like it would be closest to the road. Do, I see the set, the 25-foot setback line, but I don't see any delineation or legend or distances. Do we know how close the closest building will be to the road?
I, I can confidently say it's, every one of them's going to be over 32 feet.
So 32 feet from the edge of the pavement to the building, that's the closest any one of them would be?
That's being very, very conservative. I, I, I think if you put scale to, to paper, it's going to be more than that.
Probably 36, but 32.
Thank you.
Any, since traffic was mentioned, um, with regard to line of sight of anybody exiting that, was that looked at, considered?
Yeah, so, um, site distance was something, something, early on, we looked at with engineering and we measured every single entrance. We put, we put a scale on every one of those based on the miles per hour. And, you know, we made sure that we had 450 feet or more. There's 450 feet or more site distance there in all those locations.
And that, that amount was picked based on the speed, uh, zone in that, on that street?
That's correct. There's, there, in the ordinance, there's tables that we, that we use.
What was the, I don't know. Just a que- what was the previous, uh, zone for this area? Was it rural residential or a low-country residential?
I think it was rural. I'd have to double-check that. I'm not sure if I can check that right now.
I, I think it was rural residential.
So just a clarification. You know, prior, uh, front setback, we said 25 feet. That was a minimum.
Okay.
Good discussion. Get any other questions for staff? There's no questions for staff, I would seek a motion.
Actually, I do have one question. Um, I'm sorry, Stacy.
That's okay.
In looking at this, um, because we're being, I'm trying to find exactly, I see where on page five of six, we, we've got our, the staff suggested review criteria of why we feel the exception is fine and it's not going to do X, Y, and Z. I'm trying to, can you point me to where the exact exception that's being asked for is? For some reason, I'm...
You mean waiver? Uh, there's no waivers being asked for this project.
Yeah, it says, but it says site plan slash special exception. So what's, what is the special exception?
So special exception is when we, you know, you have three or more units and it's under the site plan review criteria. It kicks you into the special exception.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe you're referring to the language specifically where we take the average of the two lots and there's language in the ordinance that's required. I did put that on a building placement on lot and there, there's an asterisk there. Um, that's the exact language straight out of the ordinance that we, we reference, just so you know.
Well, I'll go ahead and, and make the motion then to approve the site plan special exception for the proposed development of 12 duplex units and associated sub, site development as part of Broad Street Farms, City Assessors Parcel ID 171-004. This proposal pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2 Site Plan Review, Division 3 Special Exception, and Division 4 Subdivision, and Article 4, Division 14 Form Based Code of the Auburn Code of Ordinances, with the following conditions. All appropriate permits are received prior to the start of construction. Construction shall not commence until all bonding and inspection fees have been reviewed by the city engineer. Full sidewalk design and final easement descriptions along Broad Street condition for the first certificate of occupancy and, uh, record, uh, record buffers in Andrews County Registry of Deeds condition of, uh, the first certificate of occupancy as well.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have any discussion of the motion?
Um, I would just like to add the extension of the two-year period, as I had mentioned earlier, um, in case they don't start because of waiting for public sewer and water. Um, I just feel like the applicant would be potentially back, um, so that would just kind of save for everybody.
So you'd like to make an amendment to the motion? And the amendment to the motion would be adding up to two-year extension?
Yeah, extension for 24 months for start of project.
So adding a 24-month extension of start of project, okay. So I have an amendment to the motion, um, to add the extension of 24 months to the start of the project. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion of the motion?
Is, can you clarify if that's 24 months from when we accepted or is that 24 months starting at the end of the first year when it would expire?
So we, we can do one 12-month extension in addition to the initial 12, so it'd be 12 mon- it'd be 24 months from tonight essentially when you make the vote.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that we're not adding 24 months to the first 12.
Yeah, it's 24 total.
What constitutes starting the project?
Uh, so that probably should say start of, um, of approval. Shouldn't be start of project, but approval.
It's typically if we've issued building permits for at least part of the project.
So 24, so Amanda's amendment to the motion?
So amend to, for 24 months of today for approval of the project.
And if they've applied for a building permit during that period, then they could continue. If they haven't, they'd have to come back.
Okay. Do you, does everyone feel comfortable with the amendment to the motion?
I know what we're trying to accomplish, I'm just not clear that the language is exactly what
So does staff have what you need?
The staff would want.
So if you, if you were to amend it to, um, allow for an additional 12 months in addition to the initial 12-month approval, uh, to give them more time for a total of 24 months, that the approval would remain valid. The initial approval is always for 12, so it would be adding another 12 months.
So this is to amend to allow for an additional 12 months?
Yep, for a total of two years.
For a total of two years.
Approval to remain valid.
For what reason? I thought it was attached to, hopefully if there's going to be public water or sewer, that, uh, we'd prefer, probably the developer would prefer to tie into that system.
Correct, which my understanding was that that process could take a couple of years. Um, and if that's the case, then providing them that additional leeway would allow them to potentially build in line with the water and sewer versus having to come back 12 months from now to say, well, we, we know it's coming, but it's another six months, eight months, whatever the, the duration is. So it's just giving us a little more grace.
Okay, so we don't have to review it in another 12 months. I agree. I think we'd prefer to have this development tied in. So I guess we just don't want the work of, to review it all again in, in 12 months.
Correct. Okay, so we had an amendment to the motion, we had a second, we have discussion. I think we are very clear on what we're trying to accomplish with this amendment to the motion. Um, any more discussion or can I draw a vote? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to the motion? Excellent, okay, so that passes. And then we have the first motion on the table from Mr. Trask. Um, so any other amendments or discussion of that motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Excellent, motion carries. All right. Okay, um, last item on the agenda is a workshop. I will hand that over to staff.
So this is, we talked a little bit about this earlier, um, with the project that we, we just approved that essentially a lot, um, has these storage container units here in the city, um, that people can purchase or maybe even perhaps lease. Uh, I don't know the arrangement, but, um, currently, right now, I have under Section 60-66, um, uses of manufactured housing, trailers, office trailers, recommendation to hold. We're proposing to hold a public hearing and propose text change to City Council to allow uses of shipping containers, Conex boxes, railroad cars, and tractor trailer bodies. So under Section 60-66, this is the edited version here, we're just essentially striking out, does not include tractor trailer bodies, cargo container boxes, or railroad cars. Um, we, these are, these items are used time and time again in the ag zone, on construction sites. Municipal use, uh, municipal uses are, are quite a bit. Um, it's, it's kind of interesting to have a conversation between code and, and, um, you know, Public Works. We go back and forth. Um, but the language, yeah, we struggle with this language from a staff perspective all the time and we know that there is a useful utility of it. We're saying, yes, we can do it, but don't, we're asking, we're suggesting language, don't make it visible from the roadway and let's have a nice buffer for our butters, um, so that it's not an eyesore. We're not seeing containers everywhere, so. This is pretty much it, a pretty simple language change. We're, we're just trying to, um... We're just trying to make sure that we can work around the city limits and allow these uses in a, you know, tactful way. Happy to answer any questions. I guess just to add, I'd like to, you know, have potentially a, you know, kind of a direction for staff to have a positive recommendation for a public hearing at our next planning board meeting, and then ultimately, you know, at the next meeting, we send our recommendations of text change to the city council related to the established suggested text changes in section 60-66. I don't like that, sorry.
I think this is a great idea. I use, we use Connex boxes at the railroad. I mean, they're so multipurpose for so many different reasons, and the fact that we're making an effort to label instances where they can be used and how they should be used is just the responsible thing to do, and I think it's a great idea.
Is this limiting to both, because I know it's in the background, you're referencing containers on commercial and industrial, does not allow commercial industrial lots within the city? Are we proposing that they now be allowed in just those specific areas, or does this particular section 60.666 actually apply more broadly across all areas?
It applies more broadly across all areas.
So any zone would have this, would apply by this?
Yes, it's my understanding.
And it's a draft too, so if there's refinements that you'd like to see before you support something.
Is there a permit that would be needed?
No, just of the fact that they, you know, if we, from a code perspective, if they didn't have proper screening, they could, they could address it that way, that they would have to, you know, get proper screening and, you know, protect it, you know, from the roadway, so it's not an eyesore, if it's going to be a permanent structure there.
Eric, I'm sorry, you kind of faded out there a little bit, what did you say just now?
There would have to be proper screening, there's an enforcement piece for the screening.
No, I think you had mentioned something about the text amendment.
So yeah, this is a draft, this has not been initiated or set for public hearing, so if there are ways to make it better, or if you really don't like it at all, you don't have to initiate it.
Okay.
But I think if there are things like that, that you think would make it better, even if there was a permit requirement.
So is shipping containers standing for trailer bodies and railroad cars, or, because those were Xed out, struck out of the first one and then?
Right, so we're adding those back in, they have, they have a provision, they do a workaround, particularly in the ag zone, they'll just, they'll just register the trailer, and, and we don't, at this point, we don't have any teeth to say, okay, you've got to screen that now. So they register the trailer and now it's an allowed use. So we're, you know, again, we're just trying to, you know, from an enforcement code piece, we're just trying to make it that we, we can make it a little bit more palatable for the neighborhoods where this, where this stuff is located.
So these could become replacement for stick-built shed?
Potentially.
With screening.
With screening.
That's what we're seeing now in dealing.
So if somebody places a shed, stick-built, there's a tax implication, I believe.
Yep.
If you build it yourself.
It would still, if it's over 200 square feet, it requires a permit. Whether it's over or under 200 square feet, the assessor will likely eventually pick up some value from it. It gets picked up faster for the over 200 with a permit, they get notified right away. But they review properties every four years on average and typically pick up a new shed even if it's smaller, but it's not a huge value.
So, and that, would these be then considered of value and therefore increase as well? Similar to a shed?
You can ask the assessor.
Yeah, I think that is a question for the assessor, but I do think that there's, so there's a, a way that they basically convert these Connex boxes, they'll, they'll put new facades on them and really change to match the characteristics of the existing home. It's like having a shed where you've got a gray house, you want to, you know, you want a gray shed. You can form this Connex box with gray, you know, with gray siding or gray clapboard. I've seen them modify these things. Occasionally I'll send it to Eric, because I thought he was going to find me on a project, on a special project I was on, I had a Connex box. And so I sent him a picture of one that was modified with some siding, he's like, is that in Auburn? I'm like, no, it's not Auburn, but, I'm digressing, but anyhow, it's just, it's just something that we're trying to deal with, and there's language in here that, that has them really, they can apply that in this case, they could put some new siding on it and give value, and I think assessing would take, would take note of that.
So the placement as a shed would require a permit?
That's correct.
If it's 200 square feet.
Right.
And we do see people incorporating these into larger structures too, but they'll typically require engineering where they're using these as the end walls with a roof over the, over the top or the sidewalls. We are seeing them turned into portions of a structure, or even a whole structure with siding added.
Do we have anywhere else where we kind of have something that's subjective, similar to, because I notice the language kind of says, which are altered in appearance to resemble characteristics of surrounding structures are excluded. You know, to me, you know, what, do we have instances elsewhere within our ordinances that talk about something that is subjective in that way? You know, what might be, you know, a change in appearance that I think is okay, you know, you might not think it's okay. So how do, where do we fall on that? How do we figure out where that actually is?
Is it, is it a roof and residential, residential type siding? I don't know, maybe there's a way to be more specific. What we've seen, and we could probably get some pictures from the building inspector, is if they end up with a roof that meets the building code and a proper siding that would meet the building code, then he's been able to consider those as a structure and no longer a Connex box.
So is that what's implied when we have that language?
Yeah, and I think for me, if I was to interpret this, it would be, so again, I'm going to go back to the gray house, right? And resembling characteristics, so I would expect gray siding on that Connex box, I'd really want it to match those characteristics, and if it's vinyl siding, I'd probably want to see vinyl on that, you know. We could, I think you could get specific about that with the landowner.
Yeah, I guess I was looking to see whether or not we need to kind of take the vagueness out of that, or if it's up to the city to interpret.
I think it may help to be clearer.
Yep, I'm open, we're always open for more clarity, if you have some suggested language, we're open to it.
I think this should almost be a permitted item, just because what I think looks good, my neighbor may not. And I also think with these being delivered, making sure that they're going in appropriate area, that it's not affecting what lands or being put on somebody else's property, just making sure that they're going in an appropriate spot, and it's blending in correctly, I think the permit would kind of take that away.
So we would get a shot at that as, as long as it's over 200 square feet, so.
Dude, how do our, the setbacks, setbacks though, do we need to worry about, to your, to your point, I mean, if they plunk this right on a property line, we're not really sure where the property line is, you know, don't we have those setbacks that ideally they're supposed, even for something like this, or do these not apply because it's not a physical structure?
Again, the setback's 120 square feet, so we'll have a say in that as well. If it's under 120 square feet, there's no setback requirements.
And that's on side and rear. We still have a front setback, but less than 120, less than 10 feet tall, is a zero side and rear. And then between 120 and, as an accessory structure, in most residential zones, you could have up to 1,000 square feet on the first floor, so between that, you would have to meet 50% of the side and rear, but still meet the front.
So if I have a structure that's 10 by 11, I can set that in the corner of the property without any setback from rear or side?
If it's accessory to a residential use, like a shed, you could, yep.
So my neighbor could do the same thing, have two sheds side by side, and no space between?
Yeah, that's correct, but in this particular case though, we still have the resembling the characteristics or some type of shading regardless, there's no square footage requirements. They're using Connex boxes, but if we're building a shed, there's no, there's no requirements on that, but we could still address that issue if it was a very small Connex box, they would still either have to make it blend in with their existing structure, or they've got to put some type of, of, you know.
Screening.
Screening, thank you.
I think the first place to start would be to acknowledge or limit the size of the Connex box. I believe the widths are standard and the heights are standard, it's the lengths that are variable. We might want to consider limiting factors on lengths, and in conjunction with Amanda, I agree, if it's in a residential zone, permitting I think should be strongly considered, so that we know, so that at least when the, when the box is initially set, we know the T's been crossed and the I's have been dotted. And I think including verbiage to the effect of whatever screening would complement the parent building, something along those lines.
Okay, all good discussion. So staff, what do you need from us? I think you do want a motion?
Just to get support for a public hearing.
Okay, so maybe, you know, maybe someone would, you know, seek a motion, favorable recommendation for a public hearing, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and it sounds like that we're going to require permits required for all, all of these uses, regardless of size, and then we want to take a look at what's the maximum size we want to allow. I know they do go up to 40 feet in length, so that does sound like a lot in a residential area.
You do, I think they're 10 foot, 4 inches wide, so that's 400 square feet right off the bat. But then, the argument will come up when it comes to tax assessor time, these are portable buildings, this can be moved and hauled away, it's not a permanent structure, so there's going to be verbiage that we need to address there as well.
Is this something, so I don't think there's a, there's a time constraint, do you want to see language for the next meeting before you schedule it for a public hearing?
Yeah, and are we talking, are we applying this not only to the Connex, but also to the railroad cars? And, I mean, I know the tractor trailer bodies and the railroad cars are, don't have the, you know, need to be hidden, you know, they don't have that exception, but I'm assuming that the, anything that we've been talking about with regard to permitting is going to apply to all of them.
Would you still want to see a motion if we want to see some more language?
John, I don't know if there's any time sensitivity, but I think we could rework it to try to address those, and then ask for initiation and scheduling.
Yeah, because I have some additional thoughts too, that maybe I can just noodle through and maybe kind of just shoot off to the, you guys as well, so I don't want to misspeak.
Oh, that's fine.
Let's hear them.
I'm good.
You ready? Go.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask about whether or not legal has provided any feedback or proposed language or anything else. What?
I don't think so on this one at this point.
I'm kind of involved.
No, no, no legal input at this point.
I guess I see quite a difference between what we're just, what we're talking about, the Connex boxes, even a shipping container, and a railroad car, and a trailer body, and I guess if we say trailer body, maybe that means the wheels are off of it, but it's hard to take a railroad car and remove the wheels from it. I think that there's a difference between a box that just is going to be set down on the ground versus a trailer on wheels backed in and used for a shed. Same way with a railroad car. I think, you know, that seems to be more of a true commercial type use, but I guess I'm having trouble accepting containers, boxes versus a railroad car or a trailer with wheels.
Maybe better defining those, and it looks like the railroad cars and tractor trailer bodies are only allowed to be used for the storage of harvested crops, and if they're not visible from a public way or a neighboring property in the draft. But the shipping containers or Connex boxes, maybe it's not well enough to find where that becomes a tractor trailer body or a railcar, is that?
Okay, so I think-
The gist of it?
I think having a tractor trailer box even without wheels in a residential area, I don't think that's fitting.
Yeah.
Normally, well normally, you're only going to have that once a trailer's been retired from the road, so you're already ending up with a, a box that's already decayed to some extent.
And this language is only suggesting that that could occur if it's used for the storage of harvested crops, but I guess we could be more clear that it's on a farm, and it's not visible from a public way or a neighboring property.
Yeah, I guess to add to that, there's a lot of trucking companies though in the industrial zone, and they use these trucks, these box and trailer bodies quite a bit. So I would just, you know, suggest if we're working on language, trailer bodies and railroad cars would be allowed uses only in agricultural and industrial zones, just for a little bit more-
Agreed, I think, should we know that shipping containers and Connex boxes are one and the same? And shipping containers, Connex boxes, residential use must be permitted, boxcars, semi-trailers, industrial agriculture. That's, that's my thought, anyway.
Okay, so the good news is, it's coming back to us with additional language, so that's good. All right, awesome, all right, so at this point in time, I'll open it up to public comment, I don't need a motion for that. All right, seeing none, miscellaneous, and then we have adjournment.
We have a couple of projects in for next month. We have a, let's see, multifamily project, and I don't think that we'll see the Academy Street project, we've had that kind of on the trailing docket for a couple of months, but we're waiting for more information on traffic, and, yeah, 1315 mine it is one of the housing projects, that's another 24 units of, it's in blocks of six, but they're built as kind of duplex townhouses with a firewall in between every other one, so a little different style, but still building a duplex style of construction with three duplexes attached and then a space and three duplexes attached.
Okay.
Yeah, the airport hangars are, there's four airport hangars proposed at the next meeting, and I think it might, we'll talk to the transportation director, but it might be a good chance- might be a good chance, because he's also the airport director, to maybe put a summary on the agenda for the transportation studies and their statuses, where we're, where we are right now on those. Because we've honestly never had as many as we have in the queue right now.
Okay.
As far as I can tell.
Do you have a question?
When we get a deal with housekeeping matters.
Um, you and I can talk at another time, for sure. Or would you like to address now?
Yeah, because I think there are some issues that we wanted to talk amongst ourselves with staff, and I think the sooner we do that, the better, because I think we're still somewhat clumsy on some of our motions and the finding of facts and so forth.
And we, we are, you know, based on the discussion at, I think it was the last meeting, but it might have been two meetings ago, um, we're asking the, um, city attorney to review the opening remarks, and that will address some of that, the findings piece, as they were laid out in the opening remarks. Um, hopefully we'll have that for the next meeting. Uh, we didn't have it for this meeting.
Sure. And I just want to be careful about some of the language that we use. I know that the planning board works really hard at reviewing their staff packets, and I know that we work really hard to make sure that our motions are as clear as they can be. So, um, apologies if you feel like they're clumsy. I know that we work hard to make them not clumsy, um, but we will work better.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this mo, at this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right, all those in favor? Or do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent. Sorry for the clumsy motion.